This public hearing pertains to permanent zoning for 2001 Hayes Avenue to R3.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, back in February, there was an ordinance passed to accept annexation for property at 2001 Hayes Avenue. After that, it went to the planning commission. They recommended a zoning of R3 as requested by the property owner. So, we're here to approve the final zoning of R3 for the property.
Okay.
Based on the use, they want to build what's similar to what's on the property currently. So, R3 is the designation that they requested.
And there's one right...
Right next to it.
Right next to it.
There's three parcels. There's an existing...this is the Burkett's. They own the property.
Yeah, there's an existing, well, a three-unit and a three-unit north to south. And we propose building a three-unit to the east.
So, same as what's already there decided, correct?
Almost identical, mirror image.
Yes.
And we're going to use the driveway from the existing apartment building to get back to the new apartment building.
Yeah, so we don't need an ingress or egress or additional nothing. We'll use what's existing.
Sounds pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Just mirroring what's already there, right?
Yes.
Yeah, ranch style.
And you add, what, three apartments?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, we need housing.
And we definitely need housing.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, that'd be two bedrooms, one bath, 1,000 square feet, central air, gassy...
$250 a month.
Washer, dryer, what's that?
$250 a month.
A little bit more. Not much. Not much.
I'm going to come rent from you.
That's for the water room. I'm moving in too. Better build a couple extra.
Yeah.
So, this is the final step to a project.
And it's on the agenda tonight, correct?
Yes, so tonight you'll see an ordinance for this matter.
Do you want to start building soon as your plan to build is...as soon as this passes?
Yeah, we have our quotes. And we're working on the drawings. We're kind of waiting for this to finish off the drawings.
I would request that you suspend Rule 4, but not emergency. And I haven't had...no, it wasn't on the ordinance. So, Jim Mallie will like it go. Just this be the first reading.
Okay, and then go on.
Yes, so maybe the next meeting.
Next hearing.
Yeah, I didn't have any objections from any property owners. I haven't had any phone calls.
Well, wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not objecting, but we're here.
Oh, okay. I know you're here for this matter.
Yeah.
You want to go ahead and speak?
Sure.
You can state your name and address.
Steve Flapp, and we live on Taft Avenue, just directly east of these apartments. Okay. How long has he got his ownership?
I think August of 2012.
When were they annexed into the city officially?
They were annexed into the city on February 20th.
February 20th?
This year.
All right, so we really don't have a problem with it, except if I could show...if anybody could...if I could show you my view now from my deck and patio. Do I take it up?
Sure. You can go right on up.
I'll take it from you, brother.
It used to be...it used...there were trees, and there were bushes, and they were kind of scrubby, but at least they blocked the view. They blocked the view from our patios, okay? So, I think all we're asking is, if you give them a variance, that you...that the variance include a six-foot white vinyl fence on the east side of it. That's all we're asking. That ain't a problem.
Yeah.
It's not a problem.
You know, you bought up to Miller's property.
Yes.
And I have tried in Bald...that's Baldil, to get that cleaned up.
Yes.
And I haven't been able to do it, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put up a fence. Because there's already a fence, the property to the south, the white, right? Yeah. We could continue on.
Yeah, you can extend that with the same type of fence.
Yeah, but I might push it back into my property.
That'd be better.
Yeah.
So, I don't have to deal with Mr. Miller's property.
That's all we're asking is that that would be...
So, you're talking about like something...
I'd have to get approval.
...there with those bushes on. Yep, right, extend off the end of that.
I just wanted to say what it looks like now.
That would be included in the variance.
So, there's stumps. It's a little unsightly at the moment.
Outside of that...
But it...okay, thank you. She says it looks better than it did.
Well, it sounds like they're going to agree with you, right?
For sure.
Sounds like it, but I'd like to see it included in writing in the variance.
This is an ordinance...
Yeah, we can do that. We were going to put a fence up anyhow, because then our tenants...because actually facing east will be the backside of the apartment building.
Correct. And we've had rentals, and we know how tenants are. And if they've got something to hide, they put it in the back.
Well, we don't.
You can go back and look at...
I know.
We don't have anything.
You can walk back to our apartment. We've only ever had one problem with any of your renters, and that was a kid with pit bowls that was leaving the pool.
That was...he was difficult to...
Yep.
His pit bowls mauled my whole chest, so...
No kidding?
Yeah, they were gone after that, so...
Yep.
I know who you're talking about.
Any additions needed to be added?
No.
No.
Okay.
This is just an agreement?
Yeah. Yes, this is for the signing of the zoning only.
Okay.
That could be...this is a variance here, so...
Right.
But he's just...he wants to express his concern himself. It's good to let that be known.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments on this zoning? Okay, well, this is adjourned. This meeting's adjourned. Okay, please rise. A moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Fraser.
Here.
Wies, here. Addy. Elder.
Here.
Libel.
Here.
Wies, here. Sleek.
Here.
Okay, we need to do a motion to excuse...
I make a motion to excuse Danny Addy.
I second it.
Okay, Christine Wies makes a motion to excuse Danny Addy, and Jim Sleek seconds. Roll call.
Wies, yes. Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Wies, yes. Sleek.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Okay, council has a copy of the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Okay, they'll stand as they are. Council also has a copy of the agenda for tonight. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Madam President, I have two additions to add.
Okay.
I can make a motion for a resolution authorizing approval and issuance of a warrant for payment of $33,374.65 to Coon's North Coast Security Center and declaring an emergency.
Second. Anybody have any questions on this before a roll call?
Nope.
Roll call.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Wies, yes.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Madam President, I make another motion to adopt another resolution.
Yes, sir.
A resolution authorizing the approval and issuance of a warrant for payment of $6,085.73 to Great Lakes Chloride Incorporated and declaring an emergency.
Second. Roll call.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Wies.
Yes.
Sleek.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Wies. Yes.
Okay, that's added. Okay, before we start the agenda, Peggy Courtney is here to speak from the visitor bureau.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for letting me come in for a few minutes. I just wanted to give you an update on the visitors bureau. I want to start by thanking the City of Fremont and City Council for your continued support of the visitors bureau, as well as thank you for your $2,000 Rockinaw sponsorship for 2025. We truly appreciate that. Looking forward to starting to work on that. That'll be here before we know it. Working on our Christmas stuff, but wanted to go over some 2025 updates for you. I'm not sure if you have heard, but the Great Ohio Bicycle Adventure is coming back to Fremont. Last it was here was 2019, and it's much easier planning it when you know what it looks like and you've done it before. So, we're expecting around 800 to 900 riders coming into Sandusky County. They will first loop in here on June 18th. They'll be stopping at Hasselbox Meats. They'll be doing...stopping there for morning and afternoon as part of their loop. They'll do lunch at the visitors bureau. We've got Ruth's poultry food truck that'll be there. So, that'll be fun, that that's one of their first stops is coming to see us at the visitors' bureau. And then Thursday, they will come in, and they'll be here for two nights. So, camp is at Terra State. They'll come in Thursday. They'll start trickling in mid-morning, anywhere from mid-morning to sometime in the afternoon. Our event that evening is we're taking them over to Hayes Presidential. We are going to do a catered meal over there. We've got entertainment that's going to be there. They're just spending the evening there. They'll be able to do some tours of the home and the museum, spending the evening, and then we'll take them back out to Terra. And then Friday, we're actually catching them on the last leg of their long adventure. So, Friday, we have been told there will be some that will do a ride to Tiffin, but there will be a lot that are just going to be in the community. So, one of the things that we're doing at the visitors bureau to help identify them is we're giving them like the rubber bracelets that'll have our logo on them and our website. So, what we're going to do is reach out to businesses in town and say, if you see...you're going to see bikers. I mean, there's going to be a bunch of them here. But if you wanted to do a, you know, a discount if they come in and order a meal, or you want to give them a free pop, or whatever businesses want to do, we just want to make people aware. And this will be an easy way to identify them by this bracelet. So, that's also going to get them like admission to the Hayes property, because we'll do a shuttle on Friday, and we've got multiple stops that we're going to take them to. We've been working with Gull Runnings Kayak. They're going to have some special tours. We're doing some historic jail tours. There will be special tours at Hayes on Friday. Rec Center, there's going to be an opportunity for them to go over there and do some swimming. It's just been...it's been wonderful working with the community on this. Friday night, they're going to be at Terra State. They'll do a...every Friday, their last night, they do a, like a talent show. So, they'll do that. They'll have dinner there. We've got CJM7 that's going to do performance there. So, just have a lot of different things planned for them. And we just...we've got a great committee. We've been working with, obviously, with Terra, with GOBA. We've got several different people that are coming from that. We're working with the Health Department. We've got volunteers. We've started our meetings with like the Fremont Police Fire Department, Sheriff's Department. So, we're pulling in all of the entities, EMA. It's going very smooth this time. The GOBA director has been very impressed with how well organized everything is on our end. He said some of the other communities that they're going into are just starting to pull some of this stuff together. And he doesn't feel like you guys could run with it next week if you needed to, and we couldn't. I mean, really, the only thing that we have to work out is what that route is going to be for the shuttle. We've been...we've just been very fortunate that we've got a great community that has just embraced this. So, when you see all these riders in town, please welcome them. Tell them that you're glad that they're here, because this is a great opportunity to show off what we have here in Fremont, and a great opportunity for them to come back and visit us when they have some time. So, like I said, that's going to be starting on June 18th, and then they will leave on the 21st. So, very excited about that. Just wanted to mention about the Marriott Hotel that's coming. We are very excited with that. I'm looking for opportunities for...I know several years ago, we did a sports tourism study with the mayor's office, and one of the findings was that from that was that we didn't have enough hotels that were willing to work with sports tourism groups. So, we're hoping that with this new addition, this new hotel, that that's something that we can ramp up, is really bringing more tournaments here, and the opportunity to, again, show off what we have here. We've got so much, and this is just a wonderful opportunity to get some more of those tournaments coming. And I have a question. Does anybody know if there's going to be a conference center in the Marriott? Is...okay.
I believe that is the plan, yes.
Because that's another opportunity.
I don't know how big.
Okay. There is a travel show that we have never been able to participate in called Small Market Meetings, where they're looking for...it's small conferences. We've explored that before, but we never had a hotel with a conference that would function for a small market meeting. So, that's something that we can tap into. If there's a conference center, that gives us another opportunity to bring conferences here, bring more people to the community. So, we're very excited about that. Can't wait for that. Wanted to give you an update on...we've got One Calendar at Sandusky County Visitors Bureau, and it's our community calendar. So, one of the things that we have with this calendar is other organizations can piggyback off of what we have and utilize our calendar, our community calendar, for free. It's like the City of Fremont. You guys use the One Calendar. We've got...the City of Fremont Rec Department also does Eagle 99. YMCA uses it. Village of Gibsonburg, Fremont Speedway, Bellevue is...they've got a link to it. Campfire, that's...they're going to be coming onboard with it. What's nice with this One Calendar is if you have an event that you submit on the calendar, it goes to multiple websites. So, it's a...it's a great community tool. It's something that, like I said, doesn't cost you anything. We have the calendar, and it just...that way, our calendar shows up on your website. So, like the City of Fremont, you can filter out, so it's just Fremont events that are on there. Same thing with Gibsonburg. They can filter that out if they want to, just down to whatever they want to show on there. But it's just a great way to get your events, the community events, out on multiple platforms. So, we're excited that really has grown over 2024. We've added quite a few different organizations to that, so excited about it. Also, the Sandusky County Bike Share Program. Dave Thornberry in my office is on that board, and he is the one that developed the interactive mapping component with that and developed the website landing page. So, that's a wonderful program. That was...that opportunity was brought to us, I don't know, a year and a half ago, I suppose, and we're excited that that is going so well. We've got some...an article in our 2025 Sandusky County Community Guide about that. There's information on our website about it. We've got flyers. So, it's just...it's a nice addition for Sandusky County for Fremont, and just wanted to let you know that we're happy to be a part of that. As far as group tours go, we continue to develop new experiences. We've got America 250 coming up, the semi-quintcentennial of America coming up in 2026. So, we've been working at developing new tours, continue to work with partners in the community. We have done some new tours with downtown Fremont. We're working on a sipping shop experience that we're offering. We do work with Live Edge, The Strand, Powdered Perfection, Hayes Presidential, Berchard Library, King Dairy Farm. I mean, there's all sorts of partners here in Fremont that we're working with with group tours. So, we are in May, and our group tours are starting back up. We continue to get lots of phone calls from tour operators that are looking to come to our community. So, we are known around the state as a leader in group tourism sales, so that's exciting. We've done trainings for other visitor bureaus on how to be really good at group tours and putting itineraries together and the communication with those tour operators. Wanted to talk just for a second, as I mentioned, America 250. I don't know how many...I know some of you were present, but we have the America 250 barn here in Fremont. There's going to be five of them around the state, painted with the America 250 logo and something else. We were the second ones in the state to have an America 250 barn painted. When we heard that this program was happening, I had heard about it at Ohio Travel Association Conference, and went up to the presenter, who is Todd Fleinschmidt. He's the executive director of America 250, and pulled out my phone, and I said, "We've got barns." We've got...and I went through the pictures of the barns and said, "We've got a trail already. We are very interested in having an America 250 barn." So, you know, we're thrilled that we are one of five in the state of Ohio. And we know that, you know, very much like the bicentennial barns that were painted in each of the 88 counties, people are going to travel around to see these barns. And, you know, we've always said we've got an advantage, because we have seven barns in Sandusky County. So, we know that people are coming into town for that. We get calls about that a lot. We're sending out information on that barn trail a lot. So, very exciting that we've got that piece of America 250. And just a little heads up, in 2027, there is going to be an Airstream International Conference that's coming to our community. So, we've already started planning with them on what that's going to look like. We've had multiple visits with them. They've got a core committee that's coming this, I believe it's June, and they want to look at the different experiences. They're going to be here for almost a week in '27, so we're working with them on different things that their group can do. So, we are continuing to plan for that, and that's exciting to look at something that far out. So, that's my...not so brief update, sorry. I've got a little long windlet. Any questions at all?
I have one question. On your calendar, do you have any of the local farmers' markets and amphitheater events on there? That's awesome.
Yeah.
Great.
So, there's two different ways that things can go on. A lot of times, we will scrub the other community calendars and find events and put those on, or people can submit those to us. There's a way that you go onto the calendar, and it's very easy to submit an event. But yes, we've got all of those on there.
Great.
Just to touch base on that a little bit, I know you mentioned Dave Thornberry. Just per council's awareness, if you don't know Dave, Dave's a huge asset to the Sandusky County Visitors Bureau. In fact, we, the city, were looking at a company to essentially pay to put some software together to be able to get this information out. And Dave and I worked together a lot as well as Peggy, and Dave was actually able to put this together. And this website that she's referencing is on our website. So, if you get some time tonight, go down on the City of Fremont, Ohio website, you go to the bottom of the page, you can click on these events, and you can see all of these events, you know, that way. And I do it every week to kind of figure out what I have to be here, you know? So, it kind of lets me know, you know, what's going on. But also, you find things that you didn't know were going on. And the collaboration with downtown Fremont, Abe, and the visitors bureau has improved greatly, and they have really...and they've had always a working relationship, but I just think it's a closer working relationship, just because sometimes, you know, there's so many things happening that I think that has been...there's been a tremendous, you know, improvement on communication.
Absolutely.
The other thing, if you could touch on, you didn't mention it, the Pirate Fest.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's an interesting event that's going to be coming. So, maybe you can touch on that.
So, thank you. So, Gull Runnings kayaking came to us at...was us. It was the mayor's office, and it was the Chamber of Commerce. They called a meeting and had an idea to do a pirate festival here in Fremont coming up this summer. We thought it was a lofty goal to...because they met with us, what, maybe two months ago, and they wanted to do this festival, I believe it's the end of July. So, they wanted to get our input before they put it out there into the community and really dug in and started working on it. But it's happening this year, and they've got...it's going to be a two-day festival, and it's going to be multiple locations.
With multiple, but really inclusive from a business standpoint. I know we have some restaurants here. Tim, are you involved or...
Yeah, I was very happy. A couple of things. I'm doing the kayaking thing, and I'm doing the bike run.
Yes, you are. You're going to be over in Lindsay.
Correct.
For lunch one day.
That's right.
Yes.
So, I was really excited to hear you talk about that.
These opportunities, this pirate thing, it's interesting. At first, I couldn't make this up. I mean, you know, I think they have me like capturing somebody on some pirate ship.
You better have a wig on. That's all I'm saying.
And a hook. Kevin Costner.
Jack Sparrow.
Jack Sparrow.
So, anyways, but it's going to be a really cool opportunity for different businesses and the Chamber, the Visitors Bureau, and to get involved. And if you know Bob Kerr, he's leading this thing with his wife, and Bob is just, you know, also known as Crazy Bob, and, you know, anything that he gets his hands on, you just don't know what direction it's going. It works out a lot, you know, and it's just different. But they really have a big following, you know? So, apparently, there's thousands of people, and they do some big pirate event down in Tampa, Florida.
They've done their homework.
They have...they have a demographic group of people, like thousands of people that they're targeting. So, the Fair Board's involved, the Fremont Speedway's involved. They're having a race that night, and, you know, they're going to have a pirate car, and there's going to be a pirate boat on the river, and there's a lot of downtown events around...not only downtown, but I think they're setting up different prizes amongst the different local restaurants, you know, whether it's, you know, Tim who's here tonight, or is it the Taco Box, or wherever it is. So, it's really an interesting concept that they think that they can turn into something. So, go by to say no, you know? It's another opportunity to attract some tourists in the Fremont.
Yeah, we're excited to see what that'll look like.
You guys have been a huge asset to that. And I also want to say publicly, thank you to you for everything that you do to support us at the city as well.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And we truly appreciate...yeah, we truly appreciate the support that we get back, because we can't do what we do without a great community behind us, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
First reading of the ordinance adopting the recommendation of the planning commission to zone the area accepted for annexation by ordinance 2025-4235, containing 1.968 acres of land, more or less as R3, multiple-family residential district.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
May I speak on this?
Yes.
Every opportunity I can publicly, I just want to thank Robin and the Burkett for their potential investment into the city as building, potentially building new multi-unit apartments in the city. I think as a community, we know, not only at the state or the nation, but in our city and communities, there's a housing shortage. And I'm very proud of our team. I know Bob Kerr's going to be here tonight, and Mr. Ross can't be here, but I know that they work really hard and work with the Burkett's to, you know, to help bring this project to where we are. I think we still have some room to go on this. But, you know, as a council, I hope that we continuously talk about the need for housing, whether it's single-family, whether it's senior living, or whether it's working class housing, or whether it's multi units, or whether it's duplexes, or whether it's R3 housing. As a council, over the next several months, you're going to have these opportunities in front of you. And I think as a city, when we wrote our Thank Fremont Plan, and we've continuously looked and we've continuously looked at upgrading our plan as a council, I think we've been very transparent with you and as a public, the need for housing and the continued need for housing. So, I believe as the mayor, we need to be very business friendly. We have to be mindful of the concerns of our residents that are here with some of those concerns. But we also have to understand the need that people do need places to live. And I like to use the word affordable housing, just because affordable is, can be interpreted in different ways to other people. So, I don't believe that anyone is asking this to suspend Rule 4. I believe that this probably should go its readings. I don't think it's an emergency personally. However, I do think it's an emergency for the community that we do everything we can to support housing and housing growth in our community. That's all, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. That constitutes the first reading of that ordinance. Next.
First reading of the ordinance amending appropriations within General Fund 101, Public Safety Equipment Fund 420, SCIP Fund 461, and Water Replace Improvement Fund 541 and declaring an emergency.
So, Madam President, I'll speak to this one. Just a little bit of kind of the early year budget review and kind of cleaning a few things up. The departments, just to go into a little bit of detail. The building maintenance, we needed to adjust the budget a little because at the start of the year, we had a couple of issues. I think it was a sewer line issue that we had to bring in a contractor and do, do some work and do some liney work because of the erosion on some sewer lines here at City Hall that Ken and the mayor and I didn't, didn't foresee and didn't know coming down the pike. In engineering, we've got a little adjustment, primarily for some repairs and maintenance. They received a, a truck from one of the other departments that we did talk about in the budget. And when they got that new truck, they're going to drive it a bit more than the previous department because it's going to be pretty much a daily driver for the engineer, the assistant engineer. So, they had our new vehicle maintenance guy check it out and he recommended about $2,500 worth of, worth of repairs. And at the same time, we were looking at the existing truck that our project inspector, Randall Duncan, drives. And, and it's in really good shape, but it's just starting to, starting to get a little bit of rust that he wants to kind of take care of to kind of prolong the useful life of that, that, that truck. Diversity is just a little bit of a carryover of the position with some wages that Ken and I weren't anticipating coming through. But there was some unemployment benefits that kind of flowed through our department for unemployment benefits for, for that position from, from, from last year when it was eliminated. Fire, the fire chief called me earlier this week and the, I think it's the, the, the small, the small pumper, I think, or the, the regular engine that they use. It's currently getting looked at and they recommended that it be a, essentially an engine rebuild so that they can warranty it. If they just do the bare bones minimum that needs to happen, it would just be a repair and it wouldn't be to the extent to kind of trigger a warranty. So, the chief talked it over with Ken and I and I'm assuming Ken brought it up with the mayor. And we all felt that it was better to, at that type of equipment, that is safety response, when they needed, when they need to go, they need to have the confidence that it's going to go. So, that actually was about $45,000, $50,000 worth of repairs to the engine. The public safety equipment adjustment is for the new engine, the new, the new Quint, the new small ladder truck that's on its way. What I estimated for an estimated budget versus what actually got, ended up specking out, there ended up being a little bit of a difference. So, we're just adjusting for that. The skip fund, this is related to Park Avenue. Kind of remember, Park Avenue was a bit of a mess with kind of the one process and then changing it with the other process. Well, it also had a skip grant associated with it. And through kind of the reconciling of the old project with the recycling and the new project and the grant funding, there ended up being some unexpended grant dollars that hit our general capital improvement fund that were eligible to hit the skip grant. And so, when we were closing the budget out, it kind of shook out that there was going to be some available budget. So, we had a conversation with the state and they were like, yeah, if you charged your capital improvement fund, you can adjust that expense and use our grant dollars that we already had advanced to us. So, it's just kind of a bookkeeping thing. If you look in, because in the capital improvement fund, the report that I give to council and put on the website for the public, the capital improvement fund is very detailed. We're every line item that I create for a project. If you look right there, you'll actually see in this year, a negative expense for that $17,851. So, that's the corresponding savings to the general capital improvement fund because we used some grant dollars, we used up the grant dollars that was available. Kind of long-winded, a little confusing, but that, that whole project was a little confusing. And then the other thing was just there had been a change order since we presented the budget for the chemical feed building out by the reservoir. And so, that, that last $20,000 was just a change order. I can't remember the specifics of it, but some change orders, I think for some things, the equipment that was going into the building for the feeding of the chemicals. So, just a few things to kind of clean up as the budget kind of got up and running. A few repairs that we weren't anticipating with the trucks and, and the building here. So, any questions on any of those? Yes, ma'am.
What trucks are you buying?
Well, nothing in here. This is all just repairs to some of the trucks.
Yeah, that's, and the engineers are $5,000. I thought you said you were buying a truck.
No, repairs.
Repairs, oh.
Yeah, just repairs to a truck that was at water reclamation that we repurposed and shifted over to the engineers because they were getting a new truck.
So, that's where I got them.
Yeah. Is the internal guy doing the repairs?
Um.
The maintenance guy?
Yes, yes.
That's great.
Yep, yep.
And then the $20,000 for the water replacement was just like.
Yep, the chemical feed, that's scary. I would ask council if they could suspend Rule 4 just so we can get the POs out there for those repairs, especially with the truck and, and the fire truck.
I don't know. I moved to suspend Rule 4.
I second.
Angie Reese will suspend Rule 4. Seth Frazier seconds. Any questions on the suspension of Rule 4? Roll call.
Libel?
Yes.
Reese? Reese?
Angie?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Alder?
Yes. Move to adopt second.
John Alder moves to adopt. Chris Libel seconds. Any further discussion on this ordinance? Okay, roll call.
Lee?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Alder?
Yes.
Libel?
Yes.
First reading of the ordinance to authorize the expenditure and direct the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with M&amp;B Asphalt Company in an amount not to exceed $327,574.10 for the 2025 roadway improvement project and declaring an emergency.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
We also went over this during our budget presentation. These are the streets that we, we will be utilizing our local dollars for. Auditor Grau, myself, and Safety Service Director Frost let the engineer put a strategic plan together and use multiple fund sources. The streets that will be getting paid are St. Joseph from East State to Oklahoma, Rosewood, St. Joseph to South Pennsylvania, South Pennsylvania to East State to Rosewood, Morrison to East State to Thompson, Willow to Morrison, which is between South McCann and Morrison, and Pinewood Boulevard, which is down there. Mr. Frost is not here, he's visiting.
He's in Toledo Trust and he would not be here.
The other thing I want to tell council is, if you remember, I just had to ask the auditor and let him have another week, but we projected this to cost $450,000. The estimate came in, the bid went out, and it's actually going to be $327,000.
That's awesome. I thought it was like $480,000.
The bids came in very good. We were, we were very happy with that. Some have asked, well, are you going to use that other $100,000 to do another project? Remember, we did have a projected deficit and we are still looking at trying to make sure that we live within our means here. And the auditor and I have had that conversation. And right now, we're just going to hold off and see how things are going and stick to the strategic plan. As you know, as a council, sometimes there's things that come up and we are still looking at other options in case the street department needs additional dollars for ceiling, crack ceiling, or even to get out and do some of the other work that they're going to do to rehabilitate some of the other projects.
The mayor's saying just, this $3,000, it's all going to be used in the third ward?
Did you figure that out pretty quickly?
Well, I just wanted to stress that out, you know, just in case somebody missed it because I want to make sure the third ward people, you know, because you say St. Joseph and somebody might be thinking of the church or something, you know, so I just want to make sure.
I, I will tell you this, the east side has not been forgotten about. And what I also will tell you is, no, it's not all of the third ward. There's one area down in, in the first ward down by those.
You said Morrison?
Yeah. She's, she's speaking of east side.
Pine, Pinewood Boulevard, which, which goes into that area where there are several hundred residents that live back there.
You want to not do Pinewood Boulevard?
No, I'm sure that that man, Mr. Bowers, comes here.
Mr. Burns.
Burns, Mr. Burns is very happy about it.
Got some development going on there too, so.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I also would ask council to suspend Rule 4. That way, we can get started citing the contracts with the contractor and they can get started. As you remember, we also are still doing Dickerson Street this year. So, that project's still underway. I didn't mention that because that's a grant-funded project, right? And however, Dickerson Street, just to remind the public, is slated to start after the schools are released for the year. So, that way, it doesn't adjust with the rush traffic, so.
Madam President, I move to suspend Rule 4.
I second.
Jim Sleek moves to suspend Rule 4 and Angie and Christine second.
Seth was.
No, no, it's fine. We just need one.
Go ahead, Angie. I don't.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the suspension of Rule 4? Okay, roll call.
Sleek?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Alder?
Yes.
Libel?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Christine Lee moves to adopt. John Alder seconds. Further questions on this ordinance? Roll call.
Frazier?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Alder?
Yes.
Libel?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
First reading of the ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to amend the Position and Classification Plan and Employee Compensation Plan for non-union employees to include the Director of Human Resources and declaring an emergency.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I, I spoke about this position at the last city council meeting. I'm willing to get into as many details as council would like. However, since I've already explained this, I would be willing to take questions from council, but I don't want to get into a detailed explanation again. However, I am not asking council to suspend Rule 4. We initially talked about that. In fact, I would ask council not to suspend Rule 4 and at least allow like another reading to take place. I've spoken with Mr. Frost, who cannot be here because of the nature of the position. Someone may have a question and I will talk to Mr. Frost when he gets back to see if we may be asking for Rule 4 to be suspended next meeting. However, the reason why I will tell you this is because we are in the process of working on some other things inside our administration. Clemens Nelson was very advantageous in helping us create this position, the pay schedule, and they got comps from other organizations in other cities. I've also had direct conversations with some of the U.C. council members, most of U.C. council members. In fact, I think all of U.C. council members, even privately and publicly after the last public meeting. The auditor has been, auditor, the auditor has been brought up to speed from the very beginning of this. And we have gone over that with not only the auditor himself, but also the deputy auditor. And we've been very transparent for the need. So, I would be willing to take any questions as council has any questions.
Yeah, I do. I was looking at the qualifications, which I like. Are we going to, is there going to be any wording about anything required to be relocated to the city of Fremont?
I'm not asking for that. And the reason why I'm not asking for that is for a few reasons. Number one, it's very hard to buy human resource directors anyways. And I want to make sure that we're able to attract the best qualified candidate. This is an appointed position by the mayor, not by me specifically, but by the mayor as it's a unclassified position, as we are a statutory city. What I will tell you, councilman, is that I always do my best to try to attract leaders from the city of Fremont. And however, there's times we've been successful. We have one here tonight who's been a great leader and Eric Williams, who lives here in the city. And, you know, for example, Chad Johnson, who is a Class 4 operator. There's just not many people that have those licenses to be able to hire in the city. So, I don't want to limit the city's scope of who we can hire. And so, I would ask council not to force that or add that. And hopefully that, I will tell you as a council that I do plan on putting this position out to attract the best applicant and the most qualified applicant for the position. Again, it's an appointed position, it's unclassified, I don't have to post it. However, under my administration, I have posted publicly almost every job. In fact, we have a secretary position. Right now, that's an unclassified appointed position that I also put out for the public to apply for to try to attract the best qualified candidate. So, we've been consistent with that. And unless there's someone who would specifically stand out, that would just be, you know, a O'Brainerd. Even then, at least that person sets the bar. So, I believe that we've done very good in my administration in retaining employees. And the one that we're losing is just more for a leadership role, so. Any other questions?
No, I just want to add to it, Madam President, to Ken. This position is long overdue and we've all talked about it. I know Ms. Lee and myself have been involved in HR. We got the background, we got the degree. And you and Mr. Frost have been doing an excellent job with it, but it's long overdue. And it's, it's time that we get a position to take the pressure off you guys and let you, allow you to do what you're.
Other functions.
Functions.
No, I, I appreciate, I appreciate that, councilman, and I do. And trust me, it is a heavy weight on our shoulders. However, I don't want, I don't want to sound selfish, but the auditor's office, the auditor himself and, and his team also have shared a lot of those duties and responsibilities with us from, you know, from a benefit side and, and an HR side. But, you know, we do have, you know, over 100 some employees in, in 2025. Thank you for the comment. I, I do think it's time to, you know, make long-term to the city and create an human resource director position. I, I guess I didn't want to talk too much, but I will just to talk about the money aspect of this, right? So, we understand that this is an increase to the budget. However, I'd just like the public to know that we have made strategic changes to prepare for this. For example, the, this position is paid out of three funds. It's paid out of the Water Fund, the Sewer Fund, and the General Fund. And several months ago, maybe six months ago or so, we had an administrative secretary retire from the city who was the secretary administrative role for the Water Fund and the Sewer Fund, okay? We have a director in each of those departments that also has an assistant director, okay? So, with the things of technology, with a lot of the changes we've made, we've spoken with both directors and we've made the decision not to eliminate that position, but not to fill that position. So, essentially, that person with fringe benefits, I don't have the number in front of me, an estimated $70,000 a year when you look at a fringe benefit package. So, instead of refilling that position, that, those two funds, if you divide that by two, that's $35,000, $35,000 there, $35,000 to the other one. Those are dollars that we already were budgeting for and we all know how important our administrative staff is. However, we're reallocating those dollars to the human resource director position. So, that way, that will offset that cost. We also pay Clemens Nelson, which is an HR consulting company. As they're an excellent company, I am not going to tell council we're going to go away from them because it's kind of like IT, they're able to provide the daily functions of what you need, but there are still times that you have to go to a bigger IT company to bring in additional resources. So, with that being said, we spend anywhere, we budget for around $100,000 a year for HR services either way. We're already paying those dollars. And I believe by having someone internal, we're going to reduce that cost. So, the goal is to reduce that cost hopefully and cut that in half if we can get a qualified HR director. And that's why we want the pay to be competitive. And the goal is, are we going to see those savings right away? I hope so, but I don't know because this person's going to be coming in and kind of reestablishing their own HR department, which is why it's important not to limit it to the city and make sure we can get the best qualified candidate. So, hopefully, it ends out, it ends up the way that I'm saying and we're able to see actually some savings from hiring the city. But also, we're looking to be proactive rather than reactive. I think by having a qualified HR director, again, I think we've done a great job as a team, you know, as a team collectively. And, but you always need to be, Mr. Sleek, I, you always need to be proactive in HR rather than reactive. Do you agree? And, and sometimes if you don't handle personnel issues the right way or the wrong way, you have attorneys out there, no pun intended, Mr. Libel, who are representing people to make sure that their rights and things were protected. So, it's, it's important that, you know, we, we're proactive, to be preventative. And also, with trainings and things like that, there's just, there's just a lot of different things. We do those things, but I just think we can do it better. So, that's the reason for the HR position. However, that's also the way that we're going to pay for the position.
Good first reading.
Thanks. Thank you.
Two more. First reading of a resolution authorizing the approval and issuance of a warrant for payment of $33,374.65 to Coons North Coast Security Center and declaring an emergency.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
We actually had this in the budget. The reason why you have a warrant for payment is because we talked to North Coast Security when the budget passed and told them the budget passed. However, we did receive a purchase order for the services. So what we're looking to do here is, we have several cameras, if you look around here, just in this room. Well, there are multiple cameras throughout the city of Fremont, there's cameras in parks and other areas. However, we are not on the same system where they can all be accessed from the same place. So what we're doing is we're looking to, to North Coast Security to bring everything into.
Centralized.
Centralized hub, so that way, myself, the Safety Service Director, the Police Chief, they all have access log enforcement, so they're not driving over to the rec and saying, hey, Cody, can you give us your, we had an issue down at the rec center, can you give us the cameras? They would have access to get this information. What is not on the agenda tonight, that I did receive information on today, we are looking also to add cameras down at the All Inclusive Playground, which would then also be a part of the system. We already have a camera there, however, we're getting additional cameras. When I say "we," I'm saying "we," the Kiwanis and the Rotarians. They are looking at a collaborative project where Rotary is looking at contributing financially and Kiwanis is looking at contributing financially. I think it's somewhere around 2,100, don't quote me, I read the email before I came down tonight. However, we are looking to add some additional cameras down there to be a little more proactive, and we need to do that more throughout the city, in my opinion. However, there's a cost to that, so we're trying to do what we can, but also live within our budget. I would ask Council to suspend Rule Four so we can take one on this project, as we previously already talked about this.
Yes.
I'm going to suspend Rule Four.
Angie Reese moves to suspend Rule Four.
Jim Slick seconds. Are there any questions on the suspension of Rule Four? Roll call.
Reese.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Slick.
Yes.
Fraser. Yes.
Second. Chris Libel moves to adopt. John Alder seconds. Any further questions on this? Roll call.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Slick.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Please.
First reading of a resolution authorizing approval and issuance of a warrant for payment of $6,085.73 to Great Lakes Corrid Incorporated and declaring an emergency.
This one's related to the street department. This one is the brine, the liquid brine, and.
Just buy it ahead of time?
What's that?
Just buy it?
No, I think it was related to, because we kind of had, kind of had a wet, cold, frozen, like, late winter and spring, and so I think they, if I'm remembering correctly, they exhausted the one P.O. that Billy had for brine from earlier in the, in the, like, winter season, from the salt and the brine, and then we got smacked with the ice storm again, not the ice storm, but just the ice conditions, and so they needed to order more, and it was kind of under the gun, and the previous P.O. got exhausted. So typically, they'll do like a $5,000 or a $10,000 P.O. for the season, and then they'll chip away at it when they do orders, and so they ordered it again, and it exhausted the other one, the initial P.O. And, and so they didn't anticipate that it was going to exhaust that initial P.O. And when they put the second P.O. in, they'd already gotten the invoice, and then it was more than $3,000. It was just more, it was just a wetter and more frozen spring than we've had in a really, really long time, and so they had to order more brine, and there was more with the, so they had the P.O. out there, it just wasn't sufficient to cover the additional orders, and then when they put the new one out there, they had already had to order it because of the, kind of, back-to-back kind of ice conditions that we had. So I would also ask to suspend Rule, Rule Four on that one, too, so we can get that invoice paid.
Madam President. Yes. I move to suspend Rule Four.
Second.
Angie Reese moves to suspend Rule Four. Chris Libel seconds. Any questions, further questions on the suspension of Rule Four? Roll call.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Slick. Yes. Fraser.
Yes.
Please. Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Jim Slick moves to adopt. Seth Fraser seconds. Any further questions on this, or anybody? Roll call.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Slick.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Elder. Yes.
Approved. Okay, we have a liquor license transfer, it looks like, from Friendship Village of Dublin, Ohio, to Coastal Swing Five LLC. Coastal Swing Five LLC is 1,000 West State Street, which I believe is on the corner of Rosslyn and State.
We redoing the gas station?
No, it's Mid-City carryout.
Mid-City, okay.
Or, Mid-City. It's not that anymore, it's a smoke shop and it was a sweeper shop and.
Oh, okay, got you, I'm following you now.
So anyways, if you have no objection, when Stevie calls your name, just say no objections.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
On this truck license, as Council's familiar, in the past, this is when, you know, there's an out-of-state liquor license that's brought in outside the area, and there are certain requirements that have to be made, such as creating economic development and things like that in the city. I've been working on this project with the owners of this property for several, several months, and this is the first public announcement about Coastal Swing coming to the city of Fremont. And Coastal Swing, if you've never been to one, it's a great time. It's an indoor golf simulator of business, and they have one in Tiffin, they have one in, I believe, I don't count, I haven't been to, but it's another huge addition, another huge small business opportunity for us as a community, and it shows that there are economic development opportunities happening, you know? I can tell you, a few years ago, they were on the bubble whether or not they wanted to come here, because they just didn't know whether or not, you know, Fremont would support it, but after seeing some of the success of some of the other business owners and, you know, the folks that are invested in this are also Fremonters, and it's just another great opportunity for Council tonight to support a small business that wants to bring another activity and something fun to do for people that like to golf throughout the year, you know? So I would ask Council to show no objection and support this great opportunity to the city.
Ready?
Yeah.
Reese.
No objections.
Slick.
No objections.
Fraser.
No objections.
Reese.
No objection.
Elder.
No objections.
Libel.
No objection.
Yeah. Do you have any comments tonight, Mayor Sanchez?
The only comment I have tonight is that I did declare today National Day of Prayer, and I attended a very great ceremony today at the BMW, and I'd like to thank the folks that helped me get us. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Holly Elder.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to piggyback on the, on the new business going in, with the liquor license. We have had an ongoing conversation in the city of Fremont regarding storefronts and what we would like to see our community be, and I know that Mr. Gross had commented, did a presentation a while ago on how many vape shops and smoke shops and dollar stores you should have in a community, whether to attract businesses or not, and I was just asking the mayor, who owns that structure, and it's Luke Lyo.
Luke Lyo, yeah.
And I would really like to commend him on keeping that facility and that storefront so beautiful. The awnings are always, the awning had been damaged, they've been replaced, it's right across the street from Saint Anne Church. It's on a very busy quadrant in the community that has been updated, I know, within the past five to 10 years. It's, you know, it's a thoroughfare for the city of Fremont, and I really would like to commend him on doing such a fabulous job with maintaining the exterior quality of his, of his real estate, and I really think that he has done a great thing for the city of Fremont for just realizing how important it is to have eye candy, and every time I drive by there, I just love the fact that he has maintained the building in the way he has, so that's all I have, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Paul Grau.
The only thing I have this evening, and I can't remember off the top of my head if earlier, maybe like a month or so ago, when I was at Council, if we had talked about it, but my office received notice from a competing, competitor software vendor that our existing software provider for our financial and accounting system was no longer going to support the software program that we utilize. We actually had to reach out to Tyler Technology, as the current provider, and confirm that this was actually accurate, and it was, and so we are going to have to change our, our accounting system. So my office has been vetting three vendors, one being Tyler Technology, which is the one that we currently use, one that is SSI, it's Software Solutions Incorporated. It's a pretty popular municipal financial software system, and it's used by the city of Sandusky, so we actually had some vendor demos, but I personally know the finance director for the city of Sandusky very well, and so we actually did a Zoom, they did a screen share, and they walked through and did a demo, because of course, everything works perfectly when the vendor does it, so we wanted to talk to a practitioner. And then the third vendor is OpenGov. OpenGov, they kind of got their start and their bang is more on budgeting software, so their budgeting module is very, very robust. Our budgeting that we have now is almost nonexistent. The work that Ken and I do with the department heads and then eventually bring in the mayor is done all through Excel spreadsheets and a lot of manual daddy, data entry by myself, and the new system will have a much more robust budget module or component that the department heads and myself and Ken and the mayor are going to be able to access. SSI has a very solid budget module as well, so we're working through those, that vetting process. I was hoping to make a decision by, before this council meeting, so I could bring something actually formally on Council's agenda, but we actually had an extra meeting with one of the software providers on Monday to actually go more in-depth into the scope of what we definitely want, so they could sharpen their pencils and fine-tune their, their price quote. So it is going to be, unfortunately, more expensive, because that's the way life is, unfortunately. It's going to be cloud-based. Our current, our current platform that we use was, was brought into the city, I believe, in 1998 or 1999. We essentially are using the same program that we did 25, 28 years ago. And so it is server-based, it's, it's here housed on our server. There's some annual maintenance fees, but it's not, it's not all that expensive. Everything now is cloud-based, because they know that they can make you pay all these maintenance fees, and regardless of where you go, it, it just, that's the, that's the environment for that type of software. So there will be an upfront kind of conversion cost and implementation cost, and then going forward, there will be an annual access and maintenance charge and that sort of thing. It will be more accessible by our department heads. Right now, they kind of have to remote in from their departments into our servers, where now it's going to be hosted in the cloud and be a little bit more accessible that way. If I'm at conference, it's a little bit more accessible for approving purchase orders and that sort of thing. So, so just wanted to put a bug in your ear, my goal is, is by the next meeting at Council that I bring that to, to Council in the form of a budget adjustment, once I have those formal proposals and their final cost proposals and that sort of thing. So I do not have a track me at the next council meeting in May, so my goal is to kind of be here for that one and present some more information, let you know who we decided and, and that sort of thing, have a budget adjustment before Council. I would be asking Council to suspend Rule Four on that. One of the vendors feels that we should have the financial package implemented by the end of the year, so that we would go live and then be able to start fresh in 2026 on that new software. One of the other vendors is not as aggressive as that, and it's more of a 12 to 18-month build, so it might spill into 2026 if we were to select that one, and the current vendor that we currently use, I'm not going to go with them, so. We've got a pricing proposal, we had a demo, but we tried to upgrade it up a couple years ago, and it did not go well, and we actually regressed and went back to our existing software, because it did not, it did not go well, so. So it's down, it's down to a two-horse race. I should have the rest of the information that I need next week, and then be able to make a decision and then, and then bring that before Council, but I just wanted to let you know, the implementation cost for the first year, this year, is probably going to be in the neighborhood of like $70,000 to $100,000. So it's not like a $25,000 thing, it's a, it's a significant, that's, that's implementation, I believe that's going to be implementation and the kind of maintenance cost for the rest of this year to have access to the software. Going forward, the ranges from year to year seem to be in the $35,000 to $50,000 range, and so, so I'll try to have some more information on that front, too, for Council at the next meeting, so. Just wanted to put a bug in your ear, let you know that we're, we're close to having a final decision on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to move to the public right now, before we, before we do any further comments. If there's anybody out here in the audience that would like to speak, you can come up to the podium and state your name and address.
I'm Timothy Freeman, which I'm sure most of you may know. My address is 445 Ohio Avenue, and I'm here today, I'm not supposed to kick me behind the desk. I'm here today of, of asking Council about, to revise the ordinance on the signs for the small businesses. Currently, within the past week, I would say I spoke to about 20 different businesses that had a problem with signs, which, which are the signs outside of your business, let's say if you put an open sign out there, and, and I want to back up a little bit. First of all, you know, while I've been sitting here, I've been hearing nothing but great things. As far as the bike run coming in town, I don't think Fremont has ever been thriving, as far as I know, as far as many people as I've asked, as it has now. There's new businesses pushing into town every day. I am very highly involved in the Rosslyn State Street thing with that moving in, as far as Chunky Docks. If you notice next door to Chunky Docks, there is a new small business moving in, which I am very highly involved in. I also own lots of rental properties in Fremont. I own 76 rental properties currently, right now. I just bought a three unit, so to, to say that I have invested and love Fremont is just understating, you know? I like to see the, the way that it's going, which I think that the, the sign situation is just a misunderstanding right now. I'm asking Council if we can look into that, change it. So what it is, is like if you put an open sign outside your business, or like, or like if you put a sign where saying like, you know, you're advertising, currently, we have Whitey's here, right here. He owns Whitey's Diner. In my opinion, Whitey's Diner is, is more like a tourist attraction, you know? People come from all over to go to Whitey's Diner. Currently, he has a perch dinner sign sitting out in front of his business, currently, according to the ordinance, which I'm asking Council to change. to the ordinance, which I'm asking council to change, he cannot have that sign out there. So when the bikes come by, or when newcomers come by, they can't see that that's a, you know, a special outside of his business, which he is not intending to harm Fremont in any type of way, he is looking to uplift it, he has for hundreds of, I mean, before, I mean, before we were all born, that's probably been there, you know. The same way with the Coastal Swings coming in, I know the Coastal Swings owners very well, we own the building, that they are coming in, they are going to want to advertise their products, they're going to want to put an open sign out front. Currently, right now, that's illegal, you know, they are going to be fined if they put any type of sign on their sidewalk, any type of special that they put out there, and I, I just don't think that, you know, I think that, that we could, you know, be doing a little bit better, more business-friendly in that shape or form.
Is this a new enforcement? Because Mark said that sign out there...
He's not talking about that one, he's not talking about the one that's up.
No, no, the perch one, you stick out there and then you pull it back in, you stick it out there.
I only do it during Lent.
Right, right.
It's the only time I do it.
But you've been doing it for how many years?
About 30 years.
Yeah.
Yes.
So why is it all of a sudden an issue?
Well, that, well, well, I don't know why it's all of a sudden an issue, what I'm asking for is, is just to move forward, because I don't want it to become an issue. It, it seems that it is definitely becoming an issue, it's, it's, it's a very big issue currently right now. So what I'm asking for council to do is, is for businesses to be able to be business-friendly.
We could have, we could have a laws, rules and ordinance meeting within the next, probably early June, we have an open meeting, discuss this, then give what we want, what the business people want, and the committee can come bring it to council then. It's kind of a process, if that's how, the direction you want to go.
Okay.
We can certainly do that.
Yeah, that's all, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to be, yeah, we can't make decisions tonight, if we have to have a meeting, I, I, I like to wait till track season's over, but I can do like the first one. But if you want to go soon, we can. Okay, sure we can, but, you know, we'll have a meeting, if not the next, the very first meeting in June, like at 6:45 before council.
That sounds great to me.
Right, and then we'll have that discussion for public, and if else has any questions, then we can move forward with that.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not, I don't think any of us are opposed to what you're suggesting, but we need, that's the process.
Okay.
We're more than happy to do that.
Feed these people.
Thanks for your investment, Freddie.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you guys, you know, if it wasn't for you guys, you know, and all the hard work that we, that you guys do, appreciate it.
Just, just because you did bring it up, we're in the same boat, the first meeting in June is going to be...
Maybe we can do it...
Yeah, 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 we'll say it.
Thanks, Mark.
Next meeting in May or the second meeting in June.
Madam President, can I ask you a question? Mr. Freeman, thank you for being here.
Yes.
Councilman Elder is the councilman who oversees laws, rules and ordinance, so he is the one who would schedule that meeting, so I, that, I don't know if you know that, that's why he is making that recommendation, he, he has the ability to make this meeting happen. And I appreciate you being here, I just have a question. I'm just looking at the calendar. Is, is May 15, I, I know, we thought we had, you thought we...
We didn't have a calendar.
Would you be here that night?
Yes.
Well, we have public hearings that night, so to...
We do that night?
I don't know if we want to.
Okay, so that might, that night might not be available?
Might, it's an available night, I'm just saying, I think we have one or two public hearings.
We have two public hearings.
We have two public hearings already, so.
I understand that, but my question is this, Madam President, are we able to still have this meeting, are you able to, to, here's what I'm asking, are you able to set a time schedule where if you have a previous public meeting, I respect that, but they're here tonight, are we able to give them an answer on when we can hold the laws, rules and ordinance meeting? Can we come, can we at least come to the conclusion on the date tonight, if it's not the 15?
Yeah.
But, you know...
Well, we can do the 15, what time are the, well, what time are the public hearings?
6:30 and 6:50.
So can we do this at 6:15?
I, I'm asking if you could, I, I, number one, in all due respect to Mr. Freeman, I've had numerous complaints brought to my attention, not relevant to Mr. Freeman, from other business owners, but I also want to say publicly that I think, or I don't think, I know, our zoning director or code enforcer are only trying to enforce the rules and laws that they have in place. So, and we, me as the mayor, I've made public statements that we are going to be enforcing codes throughout the city, and that's not what they're here to say not to enforce codes. And I believe if we don't like a rule, we should look at the rule and see if it changes. Maybe that rule may not be beneficial, that rule may have been there for a reason, which is why the council made the suggestion to have a public meeting. So what I'm asking is not necessarily for the rule to change or not to change, but to at least set a date, so we can have that conversation on 15. I don't make the decision on this, this is council's decision, so I may not even be here, but I am asking for at least a date and time, and does 6:15 work for council as a council?
Do we need Jim Melli to be here and, because he's...
We, it would always be nice to have the law director present.
Okay.
However, that's up to the law director, but I think at 6:15...
What we need is a laws, rules and ordinance committee, is all we need.
Yes, that's what you really need.
And if Eric or Al could be here...
And who is the laws, rules and ordinance committee, do we, can we...
Myself, Councilman Wees, Councilman Sleek and Leibl.
Okay, and, and do you think that, and I, I guess my question is to you, Councilman Elder, is are you comfortable with setting a meeting tonight on May 15 at 6 o'clock or 6:15?
I have no problem.
I would, I would think 6 o'clock would be a little better, so that way there's some time to talk and give you a break before the next meeting.
Councilman Leibl?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I hope you can be here that day.
Yes, I'd be here that day, don't you worry.
I don't have Trac.
I don't have Trac.
I'll be sure to bring you guys something to eat.
There you go. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
And that was more of a, I, I don't disagree with you, but that was more a downtown...
I know, but that's, this is a whole...
It may, and I don't disagree with him. And I don't disagree with...
I don't, that was a decision made by council to uphold it, so if they're going to change the ordinance, she should be, she should know that this is going to be...
That's the architectural board's rule, but they ask the city council to uphold that.
My, my response to the city treasurer is, I'm not, I don't, I don't disagree with the city treasurer.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, just make sure the public notices out there.
Agreed.
Right, well, and if, if the zoning director does the actual ordinance that they're talking about, because I don't, I vaguely know, but you know, I mean, those are separate ordinance numbers for one, so.
These ordinances have not, they've been enforced and they've been intact since the 70s, and it's typical for every county, every city, every municipality to have that same ordinance about the sign in a right of ways, but I will address it at the public hearing. It has not changed, it wasn't revised five years ago when we did the, the Chapter 11. There's 17 ordinances, or I'm sorry, 17 chapters of the codified ordinances for the city, only Chapter 11 was re-updated, so, and that rule was not updated, that was already in the ordinances, for a reason, so, but we can talk about it at the public hearing.
Can you give us a copy of that ordinance?
Oh, yeah, I can send you a copy, yes, I will send an email, you can copy that chapter.
Very good, thank you.
Yes.
And I'm not advocating either, advocating either way, I'm glad for the conversation to take place.
Is that it? Okay. Does anybody have any, Seth, do you have any committee report?
I, I do, Fremont Rec Department's still hiring, best way to apply for that is online. The summer activity program calendar is complete and will be released. The boss, baseball and softball signups are open till May 5, so make sure you get out and sign up. Work has be, what's that?
May 50th?
May 5, yep. Work's begun on the pool for the summer, swimming lessons are back, thanks to Sand Otter Swimming, big thank you to them. The other part is be mindful of the parks, we're fertilizing, we're mowing, it's that time of the year, everybody wants their yards nice, including our parks. The new canopy was replaced that was tore down or damaged down at Roger Young Park. In the ball fields and soccer fields are ready for spring leagues, so they look good.
Jim Sleek?
Yes, I would like to mainly give a shout out to Erica and Al, great job on the zoning that you're doing, all the updates that are happening that you let me know of the issues I've had, and I appreciate that.
I want to piggyback off him, I don't know what's been done, but did well, RVs are gone, so, huge, that's a huge accomplishment, I think that's an eyesore for Fremont, so thank you. I don't know if you're a part, but you get kudos from me.
Oh, yes, well, if it wasn't for council administration and the support of, you know, third floor, it wouldn't have happened, so I, I, I want to thank them for allowing this all to happen, it's not easy to orchestrate all this, it takes a lot of people to keep this momentum going, and we will keep it going.
It, it looks great, all right, I can tell you that now.
Thank you, appreciate that.
That's a huge...
Let's say one thing, we're going to do our best to keep it that way down there and not let it get out of here.
Well, if you need Jim Sleek to come down, go come down.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Good job.
Angie? Okay. Christine Wees?
I just want to give a thank you to Peggy Courtney for sharing everything that's going on in Sandusky County, and as the, our town is the county seat, we've got so much going on, great restaurants, places to go, things to do, things to see, we are living in a great time here in this county.
First event coming up for the amphitheater, May, May 8?
Cinco de Mayo, I think it was, Cinco de Mayo.
Yep.
Saturday.
Saturday, so...
Jam Session. Jam Session had a great turnout last year, and so there should be a large, a large crowd there, so it'd be a good time to stop down. The weather should be beautiful, I mean, I don't really know, I'm guessing, I'm just hoping it's beautiful. I think it's 6 to 9. 6 to 9, yep, they've adjusted their times down, downtown for the amphitheater, from all the feedback they've gotten, so, 6 to 9.
Thank you, Madam President. Kind of gently looked at the committee, but I and we all have access to the criminal court's year-end report that is supposed to give to us every year by law. I just wanted to note in here, and maybe we can update, or maybe we can say it for another time, that the, the judge writes that he wants to address the useful life of the municipal building, and that he knows that there was an engineering firm study done, I don't know if we have any update on that, but, okay, but I think, you know, it's a conversation we need to have, I wasn't sure if there's any update, but I think the, the court is also asking for an update through its report, I encourage the public and members of council to review the annual report. Thank you.
Thank you. John Elder?
I have nothing, Madam President.
Anybody else have any comments? Bob?
I apologize for being late, I mostly came here to make sure the judge's courtroom was put back together after council, tonight was the Top 25 banquet for the seniors over at Ross, so I was over there with my daughter and got out of the banquet, and her and my wife were off doing something, I thought, well, I know the judge, first thing he does in Friday mornings after council is to come in and check out the courtroom, so I always try to keep him happy, so I thought I'd come back and make sure the courtroom was put back together for the judge, so.
Congratulations.
Okay.
I'll move to the second.
I think Jim Sleek moves to adjourn and... Hey, cut it to the second.
Sleek? Sleek? Fraser?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Leibl?
Yes.